Welcome to the Spring 2025 School Board Recognitions Night. My name is Rick Haren, Chief Communications Officer for Argyle ISD, and thank you to everyone for attending tonight. We are very excited to honor so many talented Eagles students, teachers, coaches, and staff. I would now like to introduce our School Board President, Mr. Sam Slaton, to officially open tonight's special meeting.
Yeah, all right. Good evening. So this is officially going to be a school board meeting, so we've got to go through some procedural things here. So I'm gonna go ahead and get this festivity started for us. So it is 6:01 PM. It is May 14, 2025. This is a special meeting of the Argyle ISD Board of Trustees. This time, we need to determine if a quorum is present. Hi, Sam Slaton, present. We do have a quorum established. So at this time, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
I'm just looking at the screen for you.
Mr. Hawksworth, if you need to read the words, you're more than welcome to step out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag, whoa. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, thank you. All right, this time, we're gonna have an opening prayer. Dear Father God, we just want to thank you for being able to come here tonight and celebrate so many wonderful accomplishments in this district. Lord, we're grateful that the students here have the opportunities to thrive in so many things. And Lord, we're grateful for our teachers, our coaches, and our administrators that helped facilitate that. And Lord, we're also thankful for the parent participation in this district. Lord, we thank you for the ability to serve. Lord, we thank you again for just being able to be here tonight and have so many things to celebrate. And Lord, may it be in our hearts that we ultimately are celebrating you. And it's in your son's holy name we pray. Amen. All right, thank you. I'm gonna turn it back over to Mr. Rick Haren, our Chief Communications Officer. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Slaton. Great job on the pledges. All right, as a reminder for everyone, we are live streaming this event. So thank you to our technology department upstairs up there. They're helping live streaming, and it's Mr. Royer and Mr. Entz. And thank you for their assistance tonight. The livestream is available on the Argyle ISD YouTube channel and will be archived following tonight's event. Also, for a copy of tonight's agenda and the groups we are recognizing and the order of tonight, please take a moment, if you haven't already, and scan the QR code that's on the screen, and it will also be available on each slide throughout the presentation. Okay, for everyone participating, here's how tonight will work. A representative from each group, school, or team will say a few brief comments about the recognized individual, and then each individual, group, or team will take a photo with the Board of Trustees and Dr. Carpenter here onstage. Now, these photos will all be available on social media, and family members are welcome to take photos after the event and while they are on the stage at any time. Again, thank you so much for being part of this exciting night. And now, I am pleased to introduce the Argyle ISD Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Courtney Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Haren. I just want to reiterate, wow, elementary, you have this, the pledge skills are down over there. Excellent job. Y'all, we were having to catch up with you. So great job tonight. Exactly. Welcome, everyone. We are so glad you're here. This is one of our favorite nights of the year is to celebrate. What makes this one super special is we do have our elementary UIL students here tonight, and we're excited to include them in our spring recognitions. We are collectively celebrating the soaring excellence of more than 150 students, teachers, and coaches tonight. It's just a showcase of greatness and highlights the wide range of so many successful individuals in our district. We are a district of tradition, built on tradition and values, and you'll see tonight the evidence of being built on core, strong core academics, and some very successful extracurricular programs. We're gonna shine a bright light on how high our Eagles are soaring. We're gonna get started by introducing a few of our guests tonight. I would like to introduce our Board of Trustees. If you could please stand when I recognize you. President Sam Slaton, Vice President Craig Hawksworth, Secretary Matt Slaton, Trustee Leanne Artho, Trustee Rich McDowell, Trustee Josh, Trustee Josh Weststrom, it's a mouthful, and Trustee Dr. Leona McDade. I would also like to announce our district leadership team. If you could please stand and be recognized. Deputy Superintendent Dr. Chris Daniel, Assistant Superintendent, I believe hosting with the mosting over there, Dr. Dawn Jordan, our Chief Financial Officer Liz Stewart, and someone you've already met this evening, our Chief Communications Officer Rick Haren. And I would also like to introduce our amazing campus leadership and principal teams. And so, elementary, when I roll call your principal's name, let's just see how loud you can cheer, okay? Let's see what you've got in you this evening. All right, representing Hilltop Elementary, Principal Robin Campbell and Kimberly McCage. Hilltop. Argyle South Elementary Principal Kristen Haynes. Jane Russman Elementary Principal Lauren Tollis. Argyle West Elementary Principal Renee Thunderberg. Sixth Grade Center Principal Holly Williams. Argyle Middle School Mix Tape Principal Donna Lumston. If you haven't seen her mixtapes, y'all need to see that. It's pretty funny. Those kids know that. And Argyle High School Principal Shannon Knowles. All right, let's get started recognizing our exceptional students, teachers, and coaches. Mr. Haren, back to you.
All right, let's get it started. We'll begin tonight's recognitions with our outstanding Special Olympics student athletes. Please welcome Katie Hawley, Argyle ISD Special Olympics Coordinator.
Hello. Thank you all so much for being here tonight. I'm just gonna say a little bit about Special Olympics and then announce our amazing athletes. Special Olympics is a global movement of people creating a new world that consists of inclusion and community, regardless of ability or disability. This is Argyle's fourth year of participating in Special Olympics. The athletes competed in bowling in the fall and track and field in the spring. Every athlete is amazing, and I'm so excited to introduce them to you guys. Our first athlete is Sloane Carter. She is from Argyle West Elementary. Our next amazing athlete is Rose Chacon. She is also from Argyle West Elementary. Next, we have Safira Elridge from Argyle South. Next up is rock star Deacon Miller, representing Hilltop. All right, next we have Izzy Sanford from Argyle Middle School. Then we have LaCia Voodoo from Argyle Middle School. Andy Amon from Argyle High School. Belle Brigman, Argyle High School. Wyatt Child, Argyle High School. Abel Hilton, Argyle High School. The beautiful Ainsley Hilton, Argyle High School. Samantha Muffy, Argyle High School. Miranda Ramos Leone, Argyle High School. Elijah Zapata, Argyle High School. He gets the award for most enthusiastic. And then Sameek Meyer from Argyle South. I just want to quickly say that as these students, coach, and coordinator, I would argue that the real gift of Special Olympics is being able to witness the victories, the celebration, and the joy that this brings to these kiddos. To all the parents, board members, administrators, and staff that have come to practices and supported Special Olympics this year, I cannot say thank you enough. Congratulations to these athletes for another successful year.
All right, now, we'll have a photo. If everyone can look straight ahead at Mr. Sailor. Yes, raise your hand, Mr. Sailor. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Huge round of applause for these amazing student athletes from Special Olympics. Be sure to follow their social media on Facebook. They do some tremendous work with photos from all their meets they have across the Metroplex. So they do a fantastic job. All right, our next group is the Argyle Lady Eagles Golf Team, and here to introduce them is Coach Nathan Moses.
Thank y'all very much. Listen, I would like to announce two very lovely ladies, two ladies that qualified. They represented District 65A at the Regional Golf Tournament. First, we have Ms. Colby Moses. We also have Senior Ms. Anna Edwards. I would also like to recognize Anna as an Academic All-State member in THSCA. We give our seniors awarded Academic All-State if they have above a 94 grade point average, which Anna did. So you're Lady Eagle golfers.
All right, everybody right here in the center. Mr. Sailor, wave your hand. Thank you again. Congratulations, Lady Eagle Golf. And now, we'll honor our Argyle Eagles Golf Team, and please welcome Coach Cody Vannefer to introduce the golfers.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. Tonight, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce the gentlemen, and I'll talk to them for about a minute. I won't take too much of your time, but Junior Wyatt Fisher, Junior Carter Dominguez, Junior Will Donovan, freshman Blake Ladner, and freshman Jet Wes Morland. And you'll notice real quickly, I didn't announce any seniors, and that's the first time, and I can't remember when, since I didn't take a senior to a regional tournament. So these guys got a lot ahead of them. They're gonna do everything they can to continue their tradition-rich program, our golf program at Argyle High School. They just won their 11th district title out of the last 12 years. All five of these gentlemen finished in the top five of that tournament. Blake won first place in the tournament. All, all five of them were first-team All-District players, and Carter was honorable mention All-Region player. And we finished fourth at the regional tournament, and these guys will be the first to tell you that we're gonna go and see if we can medal next year. So thank you very much. Golfers 24, 25.
Perfect. Congratulations, Eagles Golf. Next, we will recognize the Argyle Lady Eagles Basketball Team, and welcome Coach Chance Wes Morland to introduce the team.
All right, I would like to introduce this outstanding group of ladies that had an outstanding year. We're gonna start with Senior Brooklyn Northheim. Brooklyn was a TGCA All-State player and Academic All-State for three different organizations. She did have an outstanding year. We have sophomore Landry Murphy, sophomore Kinsley Vest, Junior Blair Mosley, sophomore Emma King, Junior Trinity Diggs, sophomore Mallory Cackendall, sophomore Ally King, sophomore Lexi Earhart, freshman Addison Sims, Junior Kenzie Napier, sophomore Beverly Erwin, sophomore Ifa Jernigan, freshman Landry Reynolds, and sophomore Wrigley Green. Wrigley Green was also TABC All-Region and TGC All-State. And so, this group of young ladies, we ended the year 32 and 6. We were district co-champions. We were regional finalists, losing a very close game to Lubbock, Monterey. A lot of y'all were there, and they were the eventual state champions. And one thing I'll remember about this group of girls is they competed every way, and they played with integrity and a lot of class. And so, and you noticed when we introduced them, when there were a lot of underclassmen here. And so, we're gonna miss our seniors, but we're excited about the future. Thank y'all. Finally, I didn't introduce my coaches, my coaching staff. I have varsity assistant Casey Wallace, JV Coach Quentin Taber, and ninth grade coach Justin Ham. Sorry, guys.
There we go. Okay, here we go. Straight ahead. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Perfect. Congratulations, Lady Eagle Basketball. Our next recognition is the Argyle Eagle Swimmers, and here to present them is Coach Daniel Lundey.
Good evening. This year, with the swim team, actually had 10 members. They were able to compete in five different meets this year, okay? And they are, we're gonna introduce all of them, okay? Our freshmen on the team were Story Rogers, Hayden Rogers. Sophomores on the team were Mihal Rostogi, Kayden Suther, and Haley Travis. And our junior represented tonight, okay, is Zoe Bukio. Both the boys and the girls were able to field two relays, and each swimmer was able to compete in two individual events at the district meet. All swimmers advanced to the regional competition while at the district meet. And the girls with just four swimmers were able actually to capture third place in district. Several of the swimmers advanced to finals at the regional meet, and Zoe Bukio was able to advance to the state meet by finishing, okay, as the regional runner-up in the 200 IM and the regional champion in the 100 breaststroke. And just like a lot of other sports, we don't have any seniors. We'll have all these kids back next year.
Yes, if you can step forward toward the letters. Everyone right here. Mr. Sailor, three, two, one. Three, two, one. Perfect. Congratulations, Argyle High School. Outstanding swimmers. All right, now, we would like to recognize Argyle High School's outstanding powerlifting team, and here to present them is Argyle ISD Athletic Director and Substitute Powerlifting Coach Todd Rogers.
Okay. Try to get off this right. Ladies, could we get to the front over there? Who's here? Okay, I got Amber Lewis. No. Okay. Wrong list. There we go. I got two. I'm two people today. Kayla Rose. Okay. Kayla finished second place in the regional powerlifting meet. She had three lifts. Started off with squat, and then bench, and then deadlift, and 630 pounds, believe it or not. All right, so that was a huge accomplishment. Seems unconceivable, but I saw her at the state meet down in Edinburgh. If you haven't been to Edinburgh, you ought to go to Edinburgh one of these days. Okay, it's way down south, but she did a fabulous job. So let's give Kayla Rose a round of applause. Okay, Lauren Mansfield, is she here? There she is. Lauren Mansfield, second place with a total of 1,030 pounds. I know Lauren. She's a cheerleader, and she's also an athletic trainer. Okay, I've got to tell her story a couple times, but she finished at the state meet. She was state qualifier, but she was also finished second place in her weight class, and she was the best deadlifter there with how much weight? 405 pounds. Okay. Incredible. Okay. Other qualifiers, Sloane Pate. Are we over there? Fantastic. Let's give her a round of applause. Samantha Mansfield. Katherine Hopkins, third-place finish. Filipa, yeah, Filipa Christensen with a fourth-place finish. That's the girls' powerlifters. Time for a picture.
Yes, if the, the powerlifters can move to the right a little bit. Yep. Three, two, one. One more time, three. Oh, you're right. Oh, we're done. All right. Congratulations.
Got it. You know, I pulled out the tennis list first. Congratulations. Okay, congratulations. Have my backup tennis list. No, but I'm not wearing a sport coat, so it's good. It looks good. Okay, boys' powerlifters. Noah Miller. Noah finished third place with 850 pounds, and Noah was also a state qualifier. Cooper DeRanger. Cooper finished third place with a total of 1,060 pounds. Spencer, Spencer Hodle. Okay, as they get a little bit bigger, the weights jump pretty good. So Spencer had 1,400 total pounds over three lifts, and he was a state qualifier. Okay, Aaron, hold tight, I'm gonna, grand finale, right? Okay, Cal Owen. He's a 200, is he here? Not here, didn't make it. Okay, Cole Jackman. Cole Jackman had 1,000 pound, 1,040 pounds. And Hunter Bartram, is he here? Took the zero on that. Okay. Now we have Aaron Gomez. Y'all just hang on, just about to get serious. Aaron Gomez is our state champion for the 220-pound class. Aaron Gomez set two regional records in the bench press of 700 pounds and total lifts for 2,040 pounds. He was named the best lifter at the meet, Region 6, Division 1. But then he went to the state meet, I wanna try to hold up because the applause is fixing to get real. Okay? He went to the state meet and he set the state bench press record, all classifications, the heaviest lift ever in the state of Texas for 730 pounds. And those things start off with the squat. So, you know, you get up in the morning, you eat breakfast and you go to the arena and you just squat 805 pounds, which was also a heaviest record ever, so. In addition to that, Aaron does very well in the classroom. He is academic all-state and he applied for the scholarship, which our, the organization gives that every year and he easily qualified for that because he emphasizes the student and the athlete. So this is our boys' powerlifters. I'm taking pictures.
If you guys can shift to the, your right. You've got fans, Aaron, you've got fans. Alright, congratulations, Argyle High School Powerlifting Team. Alright, please welcome the Argyle High School wrestlers. And here to present them is Coach Bobby Morse.
Thank you all, good evening. Wrestling is an individual sport, but it's one that you cannot do alone. All the people that, whether we're honoring them tonight or not, that are on the teams that have pushed each other and made great practice partners and great, great supporters and great friends, we, we wanna honor them too as we move forward. This year, we had a lot of good success with both boys and girls. We were district runner-up as team on both of those teams. On the boys' team, we had nine regional qualifiers and three state qualifiers and one state placer. On the girls' team, we took 11 out of 12 that qualified for region, two state qualifiers and one that placed third in the state. On top of that, we ended up with five that qualified for the wrestling academic all-state team throughout this. We'll introduce the ones that are here. Colin Gates. Hunter Mazan. And Kale Barber, also a state qualifier. On the girls' side, we've got Grace Valdez. Faith Gatlin. Addison Alford. Sloan Pate. Kaylee Owen. Kinsley Baller. Lily Doyle. Tennesse Nana. If I could have just a second to talk about Lily. Lily made Argyle history by being state placer. First Argyle girl state placer. Lily's been more than just that, she is the one that about six years ago really started pushing for us to have a girls' program in the first place. And has been with Tennesse beside her in our program all these four years and had a great finish. We're honoring her in the wrestling program with a Wrestling Pioneer Award that will hang on our wall. She'll get that from Coach Moore as we leave, but we're really proud of all these kids.
Alright, everyone right here to the center. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Awesome. Congratulations, Argyle High School Wrestling. Alright, our next recognition is the Argyle High School Boys Track Standouts. And here to present them is Coach Justin Hamm.
Alright, thank y'all very much for being here. We are honored to get to recognize the two boy athletes that are here for the track program. First one is Zach Holt, who's a sophomore pole vaulter. And then we have senior Gator Young. Zach's gonna take over the reins next year for Gator. Gator was our 5A pole vault state champion and he's TTFCA academic all-state.
Alright, everyone, here we go, right here. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Alright, congratulations to our Argyle High School Boys Track Standouts. And we will keep track moving right along. We'll get the Argyle Girls Track recognitions and here to present them again is Coach Hamm.
Alright. Alright, so our girls' program had an outstanding year. We were able to qualify a lot more girls this year and we are very, very proud of them and everything they're able to accomplish through their hard work. So first up over there is Dylan Wirick, pole vault. Then we have Peyton Berry, 5A pole vault state champion this year. Also TTFCA academic all-state. Then we have Kaia Trithardt. Kate Brooks. Deanna Sommers. Sage Soul. Chelsea Nwuyu. Madison Chapman. Blair Mosley. And Emma King. Again, these girls' accomplishments this year were great and we are truly appreciative. Peyton, we're gonna miss you.
Alright, everybody ready? Three, two, one. One more time, three, two, one. Perfect. Congratulations. And now please welcome the Argyle Lady Eagles Soccer Team. And here to talk about their historic season and introduce the players is Coach Ricky Lucido.
Good evening. My name is Ricky Lucido. Thank you all for being here. Thank you to the board for recognizing the girls' soccer program. We had a really great season this season, actually the best we've ever had in program history. So I'd like to recognize girls as I call your name. You can come out and, and then I'll say a few things at the end. Jill Cassiberry. Gracie Lee. Rami Powell. Sarah Bagai. Hannah Lee. Emma Bassinger, also birthday girl. Emmy Nishida. Mia Nishida. Sarah Montoya. Hadley Overton. And Maddie Chapman. Unfortunately, we had several girls who were unable to be here tonight due to club commitments. They're going through club soccer tryouts right now. But I'm very thankful for the ones that are here with us. A couple of things I would like to highlight, so this season, we went 11-1 in district. We were district champs in a very, very competitive district. We reached the regional final and lost in PKs ultimately to district opponent Grapevine. A couple of superlatives I'd like to recognize. Hannah Lee, she's our district MVP. Our district co-defensive MVP is Gracie Lee. Our defensive newcomer, Lacey Edens. Our co-utility player of the year, Cassidy Horton. And then all five of our seniors received the TGCA academic all-state Faith Hall. Mia Nishida. Maddie Zindell. KK Combs, who is also top 10 in her class. And Gracie Lee. And then finally, I would like to recognize our Tascow First Team All-State, Gracie Lee. And lastly, our Tascow Second Team All-State, Hannah Lee and Cassidy Horton. Thank you ladies and congratulations and thank you all for being here.
Alright, here we go. Mr. Sailor, ready to go? Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Perfect. Congratulations Coach Lucido and the Lady Eagles Soccer Team. Well now, we'd like to celebrate another outstanding soccer season, this one on the boys' side with the Eagles. And introducing the team is Coach Chance Rose.
Good evening, I'm Chance Rose, the boys' soccer coach. I'll start off thanking the board for having us here tonight and recognizing the effort and achievements of the boys' soccer program for the season. And also thank you to Dr. Carpenter, Principal Knowles and Coach Rogers for your leadership to give us this platform to, for our students to show their abilities throughout the year. I'm gonna introduce the players first and then talk a little bit about it. First up, we got Kayden Ayala. Kayden's one of our senior captains. He was first team all-district. He, he also was THSCA Second Team Academic All-State. Next up, we have Austin Roberts. Another one of our senior captains. He was selected as a first team all-state, the district co-MVP. And he was also THSCA Second Team Academic All-State. And next up, we have goalkeeper Roberto Velazquez. Roberto was Second Team All-State, or Second Team All-District and was Second Team Academic All-State through THSCA. We had a great season, really rebounded from last year. We were district champions with two games to spare. We then went on to be by district champions, area champions and regional semifinalists. In total, we had 18 players receive all-district honors. We had 18 players achieve academic all-district. Two players were selected to the all-state team and five seniors were selected to academic all-state. So congratulations to the guys, a great season.
Alright, here we go. Mister, look at Mr. Sailor and just smile big. Three, two, one. And three, two, one. Big congratulations to the Eagles Soccer Team. We would also like to take a moment to recognize the Argyle Tennis Team's Regional Qualifiers and Mixed Doubles Team of Kayden Everett and Julia Leitner, who could not attend tonight because they are headed to the state tournament in San Antonio. Big round of applause and best wishes for Kayden and Julia. Alright, it's time to recognize our young, talented academic standouts. This is where it all starts in UIL Academics in Argyle ISD. Here to introduce our elementary UIL academic winners is UIL coordinators Hillary Laird, April Torres, Shelley Moses and Heather Whitney.
Thank you so much for being here tonight to honor these amazing elementary student all-stars. We wanna thank our Board of Trustees, our district administration, our campus administrators for supporting this amazing program that we love so much. We had over, around 600 students, elementary students district-wide that tried out for UIL events this year and we had over 400 that participated at our UIL meet. It was amazing. These students worked so hard. Tonight, we have each campus represented and we have the first through third place district winners who are representing all of those students tonight. So we're excited to honor them. So we're gonna start with Argyle South. And we have, let's see here. We have Evie Kalaric, who got second place in 4th grade oral reading. We have Charlotte Staley, who was first place in 3rd grade ready writing. We have Laurel Lee, 5th grade oral reading. We have Taylor Cahoon, that was first place, 5th grade oral reading. We have Shadadrew Kakuntla, who was 3rd place, 4th grade chess. Myra Marta Rosen, that was 2nd place, 5th grade ready writing. Morelli Davila Zartukic, who was first place in 2nd grade music memory. And let's see, oh, we have Hasani Ganesh Morty, that was 1st place in 5th grade spelling. Keon Katre, that was 2nd place in 3rd grade chess. Natasha Dweveti, who got 1st place in 5th grade maps, graphs and charts. Luke Laird, that was 3rd place in 5th grade social studies. Parker Strange, got 1st place in 5th grade dictionary skills. Chandra Jayah Bubathy was 1st place in 3rd grade chess. Hannah Paul got 2nd place in 3rd grade spelling. Ryan Punzelen was 1st place in 3rd grade music memory. And Kiara Chivikula was 1st place in 5th grade number sense. And Mukunda Jalari was 1st place in 3rd grade spelling. And we also have a few of our awesome coaches who are representing all of our wonderful coaches tonight. We have Chrissy Kimpton, our dictionary. We have Chrissy Kimpton, our dictionary skills coach, who, by the way, she was a UIL elementary dictionary winner herself back in the day. We have Havisa Khan, who was our social studies coach. And Sana Burney, who was our spelling coach. We couldn't do it without these amazing coaches that take up so much extra time to help guide our kids. So let's give a big round of applause to this group of amazing students. Way to go, guys.
All right, everyone, look forward. Mr. Saylor right there in the center. He's waving his hand. Smile big. Keep smiling. Three, two, one. And three, two, one. Perfect.
I also wanted to add, we had two of our board members that volunteered at our meet, and they graded for us, they conducted the event. So thank you, Dr. McDate and Ms. Artho, for being there for us.
I'm April Torres, and I am the JRE UIL coordinator. And I just wanted to say that we are so excited to have our first year in UIL participation. We had a lot of people interested and try out and participate, and so it was just wonderful. And we just appreciate everyone's support, the board, the administration, the district administration, Mrs. Tullis and Mrs. Rudolph, and we just couldn't do it without our amazing coaches and students. So I would first like to introduce Ishan Gadum, chess, second grade, second place. Ishan. Ragaram Kureram, fifth place music, excuse me, fifth grade music memory, third place. Ashaz Shaikh, fifth grade music memory, second place. Primrata Saturatewat, third grade storytelling, third place. Mandan Dudala, fourth place, excuse me, fourth grade music memory, I apologize, first place. Anika Goya, fifth grade spelling, second place. Ashish Tenduri, fifth grade listening, third place. Kevin John, third grade music memory, third place. Gagana Pulapati, fifth grade art, third place. Bhavia Bamareddy, fourth grade spelling, second place. Shrini Chaturji, second grade storytelling, first place. Mokshi Satish, fourth grade spelling, excuse me, fifth grade, sorry, fifth grade ready writing, first place. Kadar, fifth grade social studies, first place. Giovanna Alex, fourth grade art, third place. Arush Shenandi, second grade chess, third place. Siri Putala, fourth grade ready writing, first place. Kenvika Asula, fifth grade social studies, first place. Vihan Agarwal, third place, music memory, third grade. Akam Agrewal, music memory, first place. Thank you so much. We really appreciate all your support, and it's our first year. Did I miss anyone? Oh, and then my coach, sorry, Mrs. Nightingale was our wonderful chess coach, and Ms. Bridgeford is out and was our storytelling coach. Thank you so much.
All right, Eagles, look forward to Mr. Saylor standing up to the camera. Keep smiling. Perfect. Great shot. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Congratulations.
Okay, now for Argyle West, we have Jeremy Oh, who was second in arts smart, fourth Nehashani Sudan was first place, arts smart, fourth grade. Krithik Sevanantham was third place, Thai, arts smart, fourth grade. Emma Brozi was first place, arts smart, fifth grade. Ishana Nagy, second place, arts smart, fifth grade. Ryan Quast, second place, creative writing, second grade. Jude Pappett, first place, listening, fifth grade. Jethia Gangala was second place, listening, fifth grade. Kason Delosier was third place, maths, graphs, and charts, fifth grade. Anoy Cantal was third place, number sense, fourth grade. And then we have Bhavni Nachkaram was third place, oral reading, fourth grade. Cecilia Hopper was third place, ready writing, third grade. Austin Morowski was second place, social studies, fifth grade. Adeline Miranda was third place, storytelling, second grade. Nora Roby was first place, storytelling, third grade. And we have our amazing social studies coach, Melissa Hunter, with us as well. Congratulations.
All right, Eagles, look forward. Smile big. Great smiles. Three, two, one. And three, two, one. Great job. Congratulations.
We've made it to the end of the Elementary UIL with Hilltop. All right, I'm Heather Whitney. I'm the Elementary Hilltop UIL coordinator, and so I'm going to introduce all of our kiddos that we've got. All right, first up, we have Carter Rainey, second grade chess, first place. Presley Dominguez, second grade creative writing, third place. Ruthik Soriameda, second place, music memory. Thomas Foster, third grade music memory. Grace Foster, second grade music memory, third place. Alyssa Chanel, second grade storytelling, second place. Jatin Akina, third grade chess, third place. Vishvadev Arun, third grade ready writing, second place. Ashika Khadia, third grade spelling, first place. Aradhya Ajit, third grade spelling, third place. Sokha Chenupati, fourth grade number sense, first place. Ryder Griffin, fifth grade ready writing, third place. Daisy Candelas, fifth grade spelling, third place. And we also have our number sense coach, Ms. Mary Kemper, here with us.
All right, photo time. Step forward, yes. Smile big. Look at Mr. Saylor here in the white shirt, the camera. All right, everybody ready? Everybody look up, look up, look up, look up. There we go. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Congratulations to our Elementary UIL academic winners. The clanging of the medals is a good sound. You'll hear that sound at graduation, so we're familiar with it. That's awesome. Next, we are going to introduce the Keep Argyle Beautiful Poster Award Winner. And here to present the award is Noel Nightingale.
My name is Noel Nightingale, and I have the absolute joy of teaching STEM at Jane Rusman Elementary. Today, I am honored to recognize one of our incredibly talented students, Anika, for winning the Keeping Argyle Beautiful Poster Contest, with Keeping Argyle Beautiful Chairperson, Kathy Solisberry, here this evening as well. Her artwork didn't just reflect creativity, it delivered a clear and powerful message about environmental care and community pride. Anika is part of our JRE Student Council, which is facilitated by Mrs. Barnes and Mrs. Ford, who are instrumental in facilitating this contest, so a special thank you to them as well. Anika's work will be seen throughout our city, inspiring others to take action and reminding us that even the youngest voices can make a really big difference. We're so proud of you, Anika, and congratulations.
All right, if we could get toward the center of the stage with the trustees and the poster, and the award-winning poster looks amazing. All right, look right here, everybody, smile big. Three, two, one. And three, two, one. And now, this is where the young UIL students aspire to be someday. Please welcome our Argyle High School UIL academic honorees. And here to recognize them is UIL Academics Coordinator, Desiree Good.
Hello, good evening. I know a lot of our elementary kids aren't here still, but for those that are, this is what you're working towards right here. It does not end in elementary school, it doesn't even end in middle school, but there are academic competitions that take you all the way through high school that end with possibilities of a lot of scholarships, a lot of scholarships that are out there. So I'm going to actually introduce some of these kids, a few groups at a time. We have a small representation because a lot of them have jobs, so unfortunately, they can't be here. But I did want to mention, if you aren't familiar with the academic accomplishments that we have, along with everybody else's accomplishments we have at the school, I'm going to say this, let it sink in for just a second, but after graduation, a chunk of us are going to have to leave because then we have to go down and compete Monday and Tuesday at state in hopes to win the 18th year of the state championship. So like, that's amazing. Eighteen. All right, kids, I'm going to kind of call y'all out by groups a little bit, so y'all kind of clump together. So I have one representative for our science team, Pascal Amataio. Pascal is, was actually part of our state team last year as well, and we placed second at region this year. So he's our senior leaving, unfortunately, but we have three coming back, so very proud of him. And next group, let's have our computer science kids come out. Felipe Russo Enriquez. And Corbin Bukio. They will be attending first place, they were first place at region, they'll be going to state this weekend. Next, let's have our accounting representatives, Tenay Mongala. Vidica Pont. I know, I kind of butchered that last name, sorry. And Aditya Patil. They are also first place at region, going to state. We have two representatives of our lit crit team. We have Phoebe Fromm. And Annalise Bodine. One representative this evening, I feel like we've seen them a couple of times already up here for the current events and issues, Erin Gomez. And then I have our, one's already up here, but our ready writing group, we have David Deborah Abraham. And I have to speak for both these two. This was their first year to try ready writing, and they both passed district and went to go as region to either compete or as an alternate for their first year ever doing this. It was amazing. And yeah, go ahead and give them applause, that was amazing. And Annalise Bodine is also ready writing, and their coach, Matthew Terrill, is here this evening representing them as his first year coaching. Thank you. So we took first place at region, we hope to take first place at state overall. We'll see after Tuesday, you'll hear from us. So give them all a round of applause, please.
All right, everyone, smiling, look forward. Here we go. Three, two, one. Keep smiling. Three, two, one. Awesome, congratulations. It is a tradition like none other. It's the UIL Academic Argyle High School. Okay, our next two groups shine the light on the outstanding talent we have in our theater programs. First, we recognize the Argyle High School one-act play, and Ms. Good will be here to present these outstanding students. Theater Director Melissa Carpenter is unable to attend due to a prior theater commitment, so Ms. Good, take it away.
Okay, once again, our one-act play, they fall under this big umbrella of academics, so whenever they advance and whenever they get all-star cast and points like that, that contributes to our overall points. So they were a critical part about us winning district and winning region as well. So we have a few representatives, large cast, but a couple of them. So first, senior Alex Borland. Senior Jack Dillon. Junior Zoe Bukio. And Emmy, I think you're a junior or sophomore? Sophomore, sorry, sophomore Emmy Nishida. So one-act play, their play this year was called Nevermore. If you weren't able to see it, it was phenomenal. It's about Edgar Allan Poe's life and death. They were able to go all the way to region, take honorable all-star cast and all-star cast for three different individuals, and they got alternate to the state competition. So if somebody didn't go, we would go right there, right behind them, ready to go, right? So give them a hand.
All right, here we go. Three, two, one. Got it. Congratulations, Argyle High School, one-act play. And staying with the And staying with theater, our next recognition is the Argyle Middle School One Act Play. And here to introduce them is Argyle Middle School Principal Donna Lumpston, as Mrs. Turek had a prior engagement with theater. Take it away, Ms. Lumpston.
Yes, I'm honored to be here for the Tureks, they are in Austin actually judging the State UIL meet. I'm going to go ahead and get our kids out here. Sailor Barnfield. Avika Jane. Sanjev Pravin Prabhu. Emily Timmons. Elizabeth Browning. Kyle Guerin. Madeline Mullering. Kate Jornigan. Sky Bailey. Emerson Lee. And Cody MacRath. And now that they're all out here, I'll give you a little information about how they did. So guys, if I say your name and what you did, maybe step up and give them one of those, okay? Back in February, the Argyle Middle School Theater Department competed in the District UIL One Act Play Competition with a comical farce called The Sweet Surrender. The show won 1st place overall, earned the group award for Best Technical Crew, and several cast members earned individual honors. Everyone couldn't be here tonight, but I am going to call out everyone's name, and that's why y'all are going to make sure they know who you are. So Stage Manager and Outstanding Technician was Morgan Mollinger. The rest of the stage crew was Brooke Arthur, Sailor Barnfield, Erin Gray, Ally Hammond, Avika Jane, Grayson Knight, Lizzie Moes, Sanjev Pravin Prabhu, Emily Timmons, and Lauren Thurston. The five students who earned individual acting awards for their remarkable performances are Best Performers were Emily Browning and Ty Turek. All-Star Cast, Jace Stark. Honorable Mention All-Star Cast was Kyle Guerin and Madeline Mullering. And then rounding out our amazing cast was Catherine Jornigan, Sky Bailey, Emerson Lee, and Cody MacRath. Really proud of these kids, that takes a lot of courage to get up on stage, and also if you've never watched a One Act Play competition, it's also quite impressive when the stage crew comes out and sets up their stage from nothing. It just looks like this, and all of a sudden there's a hotel room on it, and they have to do that in time. So very talented people, we're very proud of you.
All right, here we go, everyone, smiling big. Yeah, step forward a little bit, yes, behind the letters on the stage. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Perfect, congratulations, Argyle Middle School One Act Play. Okay, next we are honoring the Argyle High School All-State Choir, and here to introduce them is Choir Director Evan Ramos.
It is my honor to present two amazing Argyle Choir seniors, Matthew Garfat and Griffin St. James. All right, and again, now that they're out here, I get to talk about them. In September 2024, more than 13,000 choir students from around the state of Texas began to compete for 500 spots in the 2025 Texas All-State Large School Choir. Students who make the Texas All-State Music Ensembles are recognized among the most elite high school musicians and students in the nation. Argyle Choir had 17 students begin this process, and I'm very proud of them and their commitment. At the end of the year, two students weathered four auditions over the course of the fall semester, performing selections from 10 pieces of advanced literature and sight reading at a collegiate level three times. I'm thrilled to recognize Matthew Garfat and Griffin St. James as 2025 Texas All-State Large School Choir Members.
All right, here we go, three, two, one. Three, two, one. Perfect. Congratulations to our Argyle High School All-State Choir. Next, we are honoring our outstanding artists that we have at Argyle High School, and please welcome AHS Teacher Tanya Kozla.
School Board, I'd like to thank you for recognizing all of our students. This student has received many, many awards already this evening, but I do want to talk about Zoe Bukio. She is a third-year art student, taking her first Advanced Placement Drawing Course. She has been recognized before as a state qualifier for Visual Arts Scholastic Event. She is a published artist several times over in the Celebrating Art Anthology, and is now being recognized for the 26th Congressional District Art Competition as the Texas People's Choice Award Winner. Her art piece titled Search Within: Finding Self will hang in Congressman Brandon Gill's Flower Mound Office for the next year. This is a great honor, and we are looking forward to another year of artistic success for Zoe next year.
All right, here we go, three, two, one. Three, two, one. Congratulations, Zoe. Now we will recognize our DECA students from Argyle High School. DECA is the Distributive Education Clubs of America, and here to honor them is AHS Teacher Cory Wells. Cory Wells.
Good evening. If I could have Leah Breslin, Srihan Naravadi, and Felipe Russo Enriquez come out. This year marked the first full year of Argyle DECA after a successful pilot year last year, and it has been a wonderful year. In our first official season, Argyle DECA made a powerful statement with 39 competitors representing our school at the district level. Out of those, 20 advanced to the State competition, showcasing their talent, preparation, and professionalism. Even more impressive, five students, three represented on this stage, qualified for the prestigious DECA International Career Development Conference in Orlando, Florida. Among them was the team of Drew MacRath, Philippe, and Arush Singh, earning the number-one spot in the Innovation Plan for the state of Texas. And also on the stage represented was Srihan Naravadi in Principles of Marketing, and Leah Breslin competed in Principles of Business Administration. This was a very prestigious moment for Argyle, representing the talent and intuition of our young students who take many months to prepare for the competition with role plays and paper and presentation talent. And it was a wonderful experience, and we look forward to next year's growth.
All right, here we go, smile big. Perfect, three, two, one. And three, two, one. Congratulations, Mr. Wells and the students from DECA. All right, the next recognition are the ones we simply don't argue with. It's the standouts of the Argyle High School UIL Speech and Debate Team, and here to introduce them is Coach Haley Harp.
As I'm getting looks, I definitely do argue with these children as much as possible, but they are very good at it, and you are about to hear all of their accolades coming up. I will just go ahead and introduce them, so please welcome our Speech and Debate Region and soon-to-be State Participants, Alexandra Borland. Leah Chaw. Jack Dillon. Luke Leos. Aiden Nam. Kiara Shepherd. And Shiven Singh. These students are some of the most amazing students you will ever get the pleasure of working with or learning from. They have taught me so much throughout this past year. Throughout their incredibly busy schedules, full of rigorous and demanding coursework, jobs, volunteering, and the other many, many extracurriculars, they still somehow have managed to not only just participate, but excel within our program. I am going to talk about, we have our State Congress Participants, this happened in January, and that is Jack Dillon, little wave, yeah? And then 5th Speaker in the State for Conference 5A, Leah Chaw. We have also already had our Policy Debate State Tournament, and those participants are Aiden Nam and his teammate Luke Leos, which was 6th Speaker in the State for Conference 5A. We have Region Participants in Speech Events, Ms. Leah Chaw for informative extent. Kiara Shepherd for poetry interpretation. Region finalist Alexandra Borland and Jack Dillon, both in prose interpretation. Our Region Medalist, and hopefully soon-to-be State Medalist, Jack Dillon, taking 1st place in persuasive extent. And Shiven Singh in Lincoln Douglas Debate.
All right, here we go, big smile, looking forward. Three, two, one. And three, two, one. Congratulations to our Argyle High School UIL Speech and Debate Team. Okay, please welcome Argyle High School Principal Shannon Knowles, who will introduce this year's Community Service Award Winner from Argyle High School.
All right, Leah Chaw, who was just out here, we're going to bring her out here again. It is my pleasure to share some exciting news and recognize a remarkable student from Argyle High School. Today, we're proud to announce that Leah Chaw is being honored by the United Nations Association of the USA in Interview as part of the 8th Annual Community Service Impact Awards. This prestigious program is open to students across the United States and celebrates those who have demonstrated an exceptional commitment to community service, leadership, and advancing the UN's global goals. Leah has shown outstanding initiative, compassion, and dedication in her service, making a meaningful impact not only within the local community, but also in the broader global context. Please join me in congratulating Leah Chaw on this well-deserved recognition.
All right, if you want to get right in the center, Leah. There we go. Smile big. Perfect, congratulations, Leah. Next, please welcome Argyle High School Majestics Director Haley Martinez, who will present the accolades for the Majestics Drill Team.
Hello. We have just a small amount of our kids here tonight, most of ours are like soccer, and they are at club right now, so we do want to recognize the ones that are here. We have Anitra Johara, Bryce Teffenbrum, Megan Waynes, Reagan Owens, Charlotte Moses, Gentry Reitinger, Sawyer Slaton, Avery Withers, and Bentley Calder. And our Assistant Director is Ms. Alexis Kaptagen. Throughout the year, you see our Majestics in lots of different events, from football season to basketball performances to lots of community appearances, but tonight we get to honor them for their own competition season that takes place in the spring. This year, we not only brought home lots of team trophies, but also individual. A couple of the team ones that we brought home were our Grand Champion, Small Team Varsity, Grand Champion JV. We were overall best of the best out of the entire competition. They had the highest scoring technique for the entire competition. And then in our Palm Lyrical and Kick Routines, we also had the highest score out of everyone that was competing in those genres that day. And so we just wanted to honor them for all of their hard work that they got to do. These girls are not only talented on our dance floor, but they also make us proud in and out of the classroom, and tonight we get to honor their full year of service.
All right, here we go, smile big. All right, three, two, one. And one more time, three, two, one. Congratulations to the Majestics Drill Team. All right, our next recognition is the Argyle High School Cheerleading Competition Squad, and please welcome Cheer Coach Diana Nalasco.
Hello. So I'll bring them out first, we have some that are at All-Star Trials, so they all couldn't be here, but I definitely want to highlight individuals that are here this evening. So Victoria Arnold, Sailor Farda, Callie Vest, Alyssa DeBruin, Roslyn Harden, Reese Henigan, Kayden Skowj, Addie Benson, Kate Lane, and Macy Basham. Many of you know cheer from the sidelines of different sports and community events, however, this group of individuals are also very competitive and have had a very successful year at both the state and national level. At the 5A Division 2 UIL State Finalists, they beat out 61 teams in the state of Texas, and they also scored 2nd in the nation at NCAA Nationals Crowd Leading Large Varsity Division. Congratulations.
All right, here we go, smile big. Three, two, one. Perfect, congratulations, Argyle High School's Cheerleading Competition Squad. Next, we are recognizing the Argyle High School Winter Guard, and here to introduce the captain of the program is Coach Erica King.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Special thank you to the board for the recognition. Our Winter Guard program was super successful this past season. We had 17 members, and 10 of them were middle schoolers, and it being their first time for a lot of them. We competed several times, and we got promoted each time that we competed for a total of four class promotions, and we ended in National A, which is one of the highest classes that you can get promoted into, so I'm very proud of them for that. Tonight, I would like to recognize, on behalf of our Winter Guard program, we have our captain, Allison Brooke Trudeau. She is a shiny example of leadership, and I'm really proud of her, and this is her.
All right, here we go, three, two, one. Perfect, congratulations, Argyle High School Winter Guard. Argyle High School Winter Guard Captain. All right, our final student group recognition is the All-State Argyle High School Band, and here to present them is the Band Director, Jason Byrd.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Board, for allowing us to be here this evening and recognize these fine young men and women. My name is Jason Byrd, and I'm the Director of Bands here. Each year, over 13,000 students from across the state of Texas compete in a process to be named an All-State Musician. And we had three students that made the All-State Band this year, and I'll introduce them one at a time. First one I'll introduce to you is Mr. Bradley Gover. Come on up. Bradley Gover is... He had the 5A All-State Band on flute. Next, Mr. Ethan Duncan. Come on up here on clarinet. He also made the 5A All-State Band on clarinet. This was his third, third year to make the All-State Band. And then, our final student, Mr. Aiden Nam. Come on up on alto. He took a different route. He competed against all classifications, so he competed against the 6A. So he ended up in the 6A All-State Band on alto saxophone. Thank you so much, and congratulations, gentlemen.
Okay, here we go. Big smile. Congratulations. All-State Argyle High School Band. Our next group of honorees recognizes the outstanding counselors we have here across Argyle ISD. Here to introduce this year's Crest Award recipients is Argyle ISD Assistant Superintendent Dr. Don Jordan.
It is my pleasure to introduce the amazing Argyle ISD counselors who received the Crest Award from Argyle High School. We have Caitlin McGuire, Margot Bigby, Holly Burlison, and Kimberly Brinkley. From Jane Russman Elementary, Amanda Garcia. And from Argyle South, Marjorie Edge. These counselors receive the Crest Award, Counselors Reinforcing Excellence for Students in Texas. It is awarded to schools around the state with exemplary, comprehensive school counseling programs committed to ongoing excellence. To be considered for this award, counselors complete a lengthy application process, requires counselors to document the role of the school counseling program in supporting student success, show continuous improvement data, align the counseling program to campus improvement plan, and provide evidence of accountability. We have the best of the best. Congratulations, Crest Award winners.
All right, here we go. Smile big for Mr. Sailor. Three, two, one. Perfect, congratulations to this year's Crest Award winners. Now, please welcome Dr. Carpenter, who will introduce our Soaring Star winners from across the district during the 24-25 school year.
All right, so we have a few more celebrations this evening, so thank you for hanging with us. Do want to begin with this, with our Soaring Star recognitions. This is going to be highlighting our staff who have made a difference. I think what's most important about this award is it's nominated by community members, parents, peers, staff, and then also our students. And that's pretty special for these, for these staff members. Really recognizing our core values of excellence and respectful relationships, honest communication, security, and kindness. So our first Soaring Star Award winner this year was Mr. Boyan Gutik from Argyle Middle School. Mr. Gutik was, has been teacher and band director at Argyle Middle School for 10 years and has helped grow an exceptional middle school program. His nominations highlight his dedication to excellence, adapting to student needs. He builds strong, respectful relationships with students and families and creates very lasting connections. Congratulations, Mr. Gutik. Next, we have Brooke Nicholson from Argyle West Elementary. Ms. Nicholson is a special education teacher and is making a big difference in every way at Argyle West. And she meets students where they are and helps them grow with care, patience, and lots of heart. She's also a huge support for teachers, sharing tools like data tracking and incentive ideas to help classrooms run smoothly. She's a true team player and a leader who inspires everyone around her. We're very excited that next year she will be the District Special Education Coordinator. So congratulations, Ms. Nicholson. Next, we have Ms. Sarah Slaton from Hilltop Elementary. Mrs. Slaton has been part of the Argyle ISD family for 12 years, starting out as the only fourth-grade ELAR teacher in the district. Let me rephrase that. Just 12 years ago, the only fourth-grade ELAR teacher in the district. Now, we have four campuses of fourth-grade teachers. There you go. And she's been making an impact ever since. She's known for her very positive attitude, big smile, strong leadership, and the way that she keeps her team motivated on what matters most, and that is our students. So thank you, Ms. Slaton. Next, we have Ms. Katie Hayden from Argyle South. Mrs. Hayden is a rising star as the Assistant Principal at Argyle South, and will be transitioning to the Principal of Argyle West next year. Yes, that's a celebration. She greets students by name, supports her staff like family, and leads with genuine care and purpose every single day. Her presence is felt in the hallway, in every classroom, in the driveway, wherever she goes, and far beyond the school walls. Thank you, Mrs. Hayden. And our final Soaring Star winner is Mr. Mike DeLonge from Transportation. Mike has been an absolute rock for the Argyle ISD Transportation team, and he has stepped up as a leader without missing a beat. He makes sure our buses are running on time, drivers are where they need to be, and families are kept informed. He arrives early, stays very late, and always has a great attitude. Whether he's covering a route or working with principals to improve the daily flow, Mr. Mike keeps things moving. So thank you, Mr. Mike DeLonge. And congratulations to our 24-25 school year Soaring Stars. One thing that's very special about our Soaring Star winners is our Eagle partners really help support the prizes that they get. But also, this year, with Chick-fil-A Argyle opening, they were awarded, each of these were awarded with a year's supply of Chick-fil-A sandwiches. So that was very special. So thank you to Chick-fil-A Argyle for that. That's right. Still, 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 that's right, all the way. All right, our next recognition is very, very special. These are our Campus Teachers of the Year, who had the honor of, we had the honor of surprising with a huge celebration this spring. If you've followed us on Facebook Live, you got to see the big celebration. And so, we want to celebrate our Teachers of the Year this year from Hilltop Elementary, Jordan Johnson. From Jane Russman Elementary, Noelle Nightingale. We saw Ms. Nightingale earlier. From Argyle South Elementary, Neil Karpinski, Mr. K. From Argyle West Elementary, Ms. Marilyn Michael. Sixth Grade Center Teacher of the Year, Karen Rast. Argyle Middle School Teacher of the Year, as we mentioned earlier, Ms. Turek. Erin Turek is not, was unable to be here this evening. Congratulations. That's, oh, she's got a fan club right there on the livestream. There you go, good job. And Argyle High School Teacher of the Year, Mr. Steven Orlowsky. Congratulations to these amazing educators. We are so very proud of you. What an incredible night honoring so many talented Eagle students, teachers, coaches, and directors. Thank you all so much for hanging with us. I know it's been a long evening, but I think it's just a testament to show how many successes that we have to celebrate here in this district. We're so proud to honor and recognize every one of you. We want to wish our seniors all the best in their next journey, and we hope everyone has a fun and safe summer. As we look forward to seeing you again next year, and exciting, excited for a new school year start, and together we soar. So, Mr. Slaton, I'll turn it back over to you to close out the meeting.
All right, thank you, Dr. Carpenter. Again, thank you all for being here, for those who are on the livestream, and for, again, all of our students. Their amazing accomplishments that they've had this school year. So I've got about 30 more minutes of stuff to talk about, and then we'll go ahead and adjourn. Oh, I'm getting the wrap-up from Mrs. Slaton back there. All right, the time is 7:37 PM. We are adjourned for the evening. Thank you all.